Okay, welcome to the commissioners' meeting. If everybody would please stand for the pledge and prayer.
I pledge allegiance to the Father of the United States of America, and to the Republic where which stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Let's pray.
Dear heavenly Father, we thank you for the opportunity to come together for the citizens again of this community. We ask that you watch over the citizens of Howard County, the citizens of the state of Indiana, and all of us in the United States. We know that right now it's tumultuous time and that people are up in arms. We just ask that you watch over this country, you protect this country, you be with President Trump, you be with Congress, and you help them all to look after all of us and do their best to service and do their jobs. And we just ask that in your son's name, amen.
Amen. Commissioner Bray is on vacation, so you're stuck with Commissioner Lipinski and myself. Okay. Do we have any special announcements or recognitions? Seeing none. Approval of previous meeting methods.
So moved.
I will second that, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Those are approved. We'll move into departmental business and report. First up is our coordinator, David Granger.
Hello.
Hey, David. Welcome.
I'm here to talk to you about our contract that we have with, there's an x-ray company we use in certain cases. Sometimes we need to take x-rays of the decedents. And the current company we have is called Trident Care. It's been on the books for quite a while. And they just have raised their prices dramatically, basically four to five times what they were. They had been charging us a little over a hundred dollars per decedent. And then the last time I used them, the bill was four hundred and thirty-five dollars. And I mean, I questioned them why. And basically, they changed the way they bill us. It used to just be one price per decedent, but now it's one price per x-ray. So if they're taking five, six x-rays, it's up there charging per view. So I shopped around, I found another company. I think you already have this information. This other company, it's based out of St. Louis. They come to us. That's how the x-rays are taken. They come to us, it's mobile. They're the same kind of places, their x-rays, they go to like nursing homes, things like that. But they will, with a one-year contract, they will basically, they'll charge us a hundred dollars per decedent. And that rate is good for one year. I think you both have it, and I sent it to Alan too to review. The other thing that's nice about the new company, there's a rap. The rap is actually local. He lives here in Howard County. So I've met with him a couple of times, so it's nice. I'm kind of old-fashioned, sometimes when I do business, I'm someone I can sit down at the table and talk to. So I would recommend that we switch to them.
We appreciate you shopping that around and finding a better price.
Do you have any questions?
Alan, it's good?
Yes.
I'll make the motion, we go with biotech x-ray contract.
I'll second that, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So that is approved.
Thanks, David.
All right.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Next up is our health department. Mr. Bass.
Just in time.
Just in time.
No better than running up the stairs when you're this out of shape.
Healthy.
Yeah, sure. So we're just requesting permission to apply for this H5N1 grant.
You need to establish a new fund number.
We did establish a number for you, which is eighty-nine oh nine.
You've already established that?
We've established it, we just have to do a board once, and then you guys will sign it and we'll get it back to James.
I'll have an ordinance for the next meeting on that fund.
I'll make the motion for you to go ahead and apply for the H5N1 grant.
I'll second that. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So that's approved.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Next up is community corrections, Dustin Loon.
Hey, Dustin.
Sure, thank you.
I didn't impress myself either.
Thank you.
So it is grant season for community supervision. As you guys know, we are supported heavily by grant funds through the Department of Corrections and the Office of Core Services. We're requesting an increase in most of our grant-funded, in most of our grants that we're requesting. I'm requesting your permission to pursue these grants for 2026. Again, it's about 1.6, a little bit over 1.6 million dollars in total that we are requesting for 2026. I guess it's more than that, about 1.75, 1.8. And this is to help supplement funds for our work release program. Requesting just over a million dollars for that program. Our probation program, we're requesting a hundred and thirty-one thousand dollars. Pre-trial services, we're requesting two hundred and six thousand. And our home detention, we're requesting four hundred and forty-four thousand dollars for that program. The most significant increases are in our work release and in our pre-trial services. And those are due to addition of staff at work release. We're looking at adding a couple of positions at work release. And then our pre-trial, we are trying to make a part-time, a full-time. And we are, we're hoping to help supplement our pre-trial coordinator salary so that we can preserve our project income for other operational costs.
Dustin, I have a question for you because you brought up work release. And you know, I, in community correction board meetings, I beat this drum all the time. Female work release is, how's come that is always 50% or less than capacity? That's my question. I know you don't control that, you're not a judge, but I'm asking you, since you oversee that. It really, it doesn't make a lot of sense to me, and I don't quite understand it, and I never sometimes get straight answers on it.
Yeah, so I wish I had Jeremy here with me today. He could answer a little bit better than I can. I am not in the day-to-day at work release, as you know. I'm out there about a day a week. There's a lot of different factors in our female population. At one point, we were doing some number crunching, and we were trying to figure out, we're trying to figure out this very answer. And I don't have a great answer for you as to why we don't have more females other than the female population overall is down. There, I don't think that there's less probably eligible on a pro-rated like percentage from male to female, but that population's significantly less. It's one-third of the male population, and it's about a half on our work release. So we have eighty male and we have forty female beds. So when you look at the population differences, we would think we would see an average of around thirty, if we were apples to apples. But that's not what we see. We do usually see between twenty and thirty female participants at any time in our program.
And just as a question, and you may not have the answer, would we be better utilized to use those as male beds and not have female beds?
I don't think there's an opportunity for that. And the reason that it was so important that we pursued a female option for work release was because when you offer one program for male participants and not one for female population, you run into this issue with attorneys coming after you for not having equal opportunities for your female population. And there's not a way of separating them out to where it's a lesser area because we do pods, it's a communal living environment. There's forty beds in one room. You can't split that room in two for a wide variety of reasons. You can't split that room in two. But that is not an option that's on the table at this point in time to increase one or reduce and reduce the other. But I don't have a great answer for you, and I will work to get you a better answer.
No, I appreciate you trying to answer it. You're not there day-to-day, I understand that, but you're trying to...
A lot of it has to do with the placement, and we do use it as an opportunity for sanctions for persons on probation and in our work release, or in our home detention. It's just not something that is, if it is utilized as much, their terms are shorter too. There's a shorter term to their sentences typically.
Thank you.
For our work release.
Dustin, I have a couple of questions. I appreciate your getting and working towards these grants. Very helpful. And your success in these. As you know, the state legislators and the governor are working hard to reduce taxes, property taxes, which in turn is our revenue, which means that it's likely that our revenue will be reduced. Now, we don't know how much, you know, that's still up in the air. But if that's the case, then everything's on the table, you know. I've heard everything from fifteen percent to five to seven percent to even less than that. So I just don't know. But I do believe something's going to happen. Some reduction is going to happen in what I call our revenue, because that's really what it is. If that happens, then we as a county are required to reduce our expenditures. And so I get that your list here or request, you know, when I see like salary adjustments and operational supplies and service budget, and I get it, that that's what you'd like to see. But I just, I want you to know that we don't know. We don't know what's going to happen. It's, and in addition to all of this, and I know you're well aware, we also have a jail to build. So we have to come up with those payments towards a jail in addition to maybe having our revenue decreased.
I think that's why these grants and the way that we do business is we operate heavily on grants and project income. I mean, you've seen my budget, you know what we do. There's, I think it's this year, we're about 1.4 million in the county general. We get more than that in grants in the year. We spend more than that out of project income in a year. We try to supplement and make as little impact on our local taxpayers as we can, and we try to do the best job that we can. When we talk about reducing, when we talk about reducing, it concerns me because, well, what are we going to do then? Because each one of these grants has attachments with there's expectations that we have to return data, and we're supposed to show some sort of positive outcome from these. And when you have less staff or fewer staff, or when you struggle with staffing in general, your outcomes, they go in the tank in a lot of ways where they start to falter. Then you lose more money, then you're in debt on the other side of that. And I'm not here to be on a soapbox. So I understand what you're saying. I also understand that what we do is pretty important, and we do supplement our salaries and our operations pretty heavily outside of county funding.
Yes, you do. And like I said, I so appreciate when I see, you know, a successful approach to grants like what you're doing here. I just wanted to mention that, that it's going to be a tough year.
Every year's tough, it seems like in my world. If that would be approved, I do have a letter that I would greatly appreciate a signature on for us to pursue these grants.
You're just requesting permission to pursue these grants?
Yes, I'm just asking for your support to pursue these grants. And then I have a letter that states as such that I have to submit with these grants.
Any questions?
Aye.
Motion to support?
A motion to support these grants, absolutely.
I will support that as well, second. You need one of these from each of us, so... Okay.
Thanks, Dustin. Aye.
We'll give one to Helen and one to Jessica.
Okay. Thanks.
Thank you, Dustin. Next will be our planning commission, Greg Shealan.
Good afternoon. I have two cases before you. The first case is a rezoning case. It's ordinance number 2025-BCCO-11. It's a rezone at 6506 West 400 North, and they're rezoning from agricultural to rural residential. And it was Noah Monstrant sat at the planning commission meeting.
I would make a motion for ordinance 25-BCCO-11.
I will second that. All in favor?
Aye.
That is approved. How many of these copies do we have? We have one there.
You'll have three. There'll be three for each, both of you to sign.
Okay. Two. Two here, one here. Okay.
Okay, so the next item is the approval of the platform Solid Rock subdivision. It's a one-lot subdivision, it's the same address that you just approved the rezoning for, 6506 West 400 North.
It's this one?
Yes.
I'll make that motion.
I will second that motion, all in favor?
Aye.
That is approved, Greg.
That's all I have, thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Next is our maintenance department, Bill Stone Street.
Good afternoon, I have one request for this meeting, and it's to do some repairs that we need to make at the Jeff Stout Government Center. We found another drain line that I thought actually had been done. It wasn't in a previous project. It's not a huge line, but it has a lot of connectors, so it's going to be a lot, pretty labor-intensive to replace this pipe. And it is the last of the pipe that connects the original project. And the cost for this is $5,396.67. It's being done by QPH, and I would like to pay for this project from Coomcat Building Repair, 1138.47241.
Make the motion as read.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Bill.
No more floods over there, Bill.
Yes, it was.
Okay, next will be Kenzie, Kathy Carlson.
Hello.
Hi, Kathy.
I'm here to talk with you about Crisis Prevention Institute cost. We are wanting to send a new staff member for the advanced training. The cost of that is $6,099. I had a $75,000 grant through the Department of Child Service called Workforce Stabilization Grant Fund. And I contacted them, and they agreed that I could use that grant to fund this need. So that would be something that will be grant-funded.
Yeah, I'll make that motion.
All right. Kathy, I'm a former CPI instructor. I know how important that is, and it is a great program, very useful. And I just want to say how much I appreciate you looking for a grant to fund that, and I really do. So thank you for doing that.
You're very welcome.
I will second that motion, if all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So that is approved. Thank you. Okay, next is Highway, Amber.
I just have one thing today. Our Community Crossings Matching Grant for a resurface project, those bids were due today. We received two bids. The first one is from DC Construction Services. Their total bid is $2,331,883.67. And our second bid is from E&amp;B Paving. Their bid is $2,388,910.11. So I will have to take these under advisement, but I would like to go ahead and, I'm sure, and take these under advisement. I'm not sure if the first contractor is qualified, so I do need to check that out before I can make the award.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you, Amber. Next will be Howard Haven, Jennifer.
Good afternoon. I'm here today to get Richard Green approved to reside at Howard Haven. He was our emergency admit for March 24th.
Make that motion.
I will second that. Thank you, Jennifer. So all in favor of this?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, Jennifer. Next is our illustrious sheriff.
Yes, absolutely. We need a new mower for the road crews. We have funds that we need to appropriate. We have plenty of funds there to do it. Mowers, ninety-five, a little bit more than what I said to you earlier because we added a couple of things to it. Nine thousand, five hundred, four dollars and fifty-eight cents. We're going to take it out of fund number 4903-47210 as soon as we do the additional appropriation on the 22nd.
I'll make that motion.
Sheriff, does this mean you're going to do all the mowing for us now with a new mower?
Not quite.
Not quite.
Not quite. We'll try, we'll do our best.
All right, well, I'll still go ahead and second that motion, all in favor?
Aye.
There you go, sheriff. Okay. Under new business, I have one item under new business. Many of you know Jerry Paul, a member of our community. And back a week or two ago, we were notified that Jerry was receiving a medal for his service. And so the commissioners did a proclamation to be read at a service that they were doing for Jerry over in Lafayette, where he resides at the Beth Home. The city did one, the governor's office did one. And this proclamation, Jeff, because of my voice, I'd ask you to read this proclamation into the record.
Okay. Resolution number 25 BCR-7, a proclamation of the Howard County Board of Commissioners honoring Jerry Paul on receipt of the Congressional Gold Medal and Challenge Coin. Whereas Jerry Paul was drafted into the United States Army on February 24th, 1969, and whereas Jerry Paul was trained as a UH-1 Huey Helicopter Repairman and served in Vietnam from March 23rd, 1970, until his departure in January 21st, 1971. And whereas Jerry Paul served with the 498th Medical Company, aka known as Dust Off, under the United States Army Medical Command Headquarters, which would routinely land in dangerous war zones under heavy fire to rescue and retrieve wounded and deceased soldiers and Marines. Whereas Jerry Paul has been honored numerous times previously for his bravery and actions during battle, having received the National Defense Service Medal, Vietnam Service Medal, Army Air Medal, Republic of Vietnam Campaign Medal, with 1960 Device, and Republic of Vietnam Gallantry Cross with the Palm Unit. And now therefore be it resolved that on behalf of the citizens of Howard County and the Howard County Board of Commissioners affirms its support and appreciation of Jerry Paul and his service to our community and nation, and congratulates him on his receipt of his most recent award, the Congressional Gold Medal and Challenge Coin, done this day, this 31st day of March, 2025, Howard County Board of Commissioners.
Jerry has done a lot for the veterans and for our community. He's been instrumental in several monuments. It's really been an amazing career that he's had. So we were honored to be able to do something like this to honor him. So we wanted to read that into the record and let you know what was going on. So... Okay. Salary claims.
Okay, I have two. For 3/21, $1,183,317.48. And for April 4th, $1,142,373.67.
Move to approve. I will second that, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Payroll expense.
For 3/21, $1,183,317.48.
Move to approve.
Sorry, for 4/4, $1,142,373.67.
Move to approve. Okay, I will second both of those, all in favor?
Aye.
Those are approved. Operating claims. Move to approve?
Yeah.
Okay, just checking. I will second that, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, those are approved. Any claims to ratify?
None.
Any monthly reports?
County Treasurer's monthly report, month ending 2/28 of 2025. Thank you.
Any grants?
None.
Mr. Wilson?
Nothing tonight.
Mr. Lipinski?
Mr. Wilson, I know...
Mr. Wilson, I know you've been gone last week. I'm asking that maybe you could follow up with the West Middle, the Bloodso property, or have you, or?
Yeah, I've done nothing in the last week, obviously, since I was gone.
Right.
My intention is to contact the attorney. He was supposed to talk to his client about allowing access to the building by an engineer or someone. I haven't heard anything from him on that, so that's our next step. And if he's not done that, and you don't have permission, then we'll have to go get a court order to do that.
Thank you.
Anything else?
That's it.
Okay, I've got one item to bring up. As everyone knows, or most people know, we purchased 48 acres to build a new jail on. There's a lot of mowing. Mowing season is upon us rapidly. So we need to start mowing out there. And so in looking at that, we need a mower and a tractor to start doing some stuff out there. So we've looked around, and we got a couple quotes. The lowest quote is for a Kubota tractor LX3520HSD. And then now for a new one, this is one with a front-end loader. This is one with two mowers, a bush hog and a finished mower as well, for $34,271.02. So this is the one that we would like to purchase. And we will purchase this out of our equipment line item.
I'll make that motion.
I will second that. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so there's that. Public comment. I knew if I waited long enough.
Brad Simone, Eastern Howard County. I know, pretty sure, correct me if I'm wrong, we got approved for money allocated to enforce nuisance properties, correct?
We, yes, we did.
I know we've talked about a nuisance ordinance since about July last year. We close that, bring that home across the finish line a lot here.
As you heard me, you may have heard, when I talked to the council, I said we were not willing to sign a nuisance ordinance unless we had somebody to help enforce that. Because having an ordinance without an enforcement component just made no sense. So now we are pursuing an enforcement component of that, so yes, now we are very close.
Gotcha. So basically need somebody who's willing to work. Good luck, right? And then maybe we can get that dude across the finish line, I guess, right? Is that the way I'm understanding it? Alright, thanks. That's all I had. Appreciate you.
Thanks, Brad.
Any other public comment to come before the commissioners?
Move to adjourn.
I second that. We are adjourned.